The Grand Park County Commission Meeting will have the order again December nineteenth, twenty twenty-three. We will commence with the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance.
To the land, to the nation, for which it stands, for my nation, my mother God, and you, and this all, liberty and justice for all.
All right, first item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes. So we'll mention already from Commissioner Ross. If you have a second. Mr. Ross, but Russ is rather. All in favor of the vote to approve by saying aye?
Aye.
The approval of the order of agenda, Commissioner Peach, do you have an addition?
Yes, I would like to add the Grand Park's Human Services Zone, Tammy Knudsen will be talking about a vehicle. And discussion, it should fall after six become six one before we go on to the county plan.
Stand a motion to amend, there's a second. Mr. Dagan, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Then the next item is the consent agenda. And anyone, and that would be the bills, the place employee status changes, overtime, financial report. Walsh County Perdiem Agreement. Beer and liquor licenses, and the game was chance for it. Anybody want anything pulled from you? None who had motion, Mr. Peach?
Yes.
Second, Mr. Ross did, all in favor of the motion? Signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Passed. All right, um, next, the next thing is county board appointments. And where do we start with that?
Yes, Mr. Chair, members of the commission, you have a few committees and county boards with some expired terms. You have the Human Service Zone, and they are recommending reappointing James Reamer to a three-year term. And just, does the chair, do you want to, do you want to take these one by one?
We should take one by one.
Okay, so the first is the Human Service Zone, and they are recommending reappointing Mr. James Reamer to a three-year term.
Mr. Peach?
Mr. Chair, we need approval of Mr. Reamer remaining or coming on the Grand Park County Human Services Board for a three-year term.
Second, Ross is already second, seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, signify as aye?
Aye.
Both? Passed, the next one?
Yes, sir. Next would be the Public Safety Asking Point, and that board is recommending Mr. Casey Inman be reappointed to that board to fulfill one-year term.
So the motions, Mr. Ross made the motion, second?
Second.
Mr. Ross did. Any discussion on this? Hearing none? All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Both? Yes.
Next is, yes, sir, the Water Board, and they are recommending reappointing Mr. Tom Drew to a three-year term.
Mr. Drew, we'd like to say, can I get any comments? May I? What? Like you.
Thank you for giving me the opportunity to say something. Didn't get a chance three years ago when COVID was going on, it all resumed. Completing my sixth year on Water Board, six years ago when I appeared before you, I didn't even know what I didn't know. And it worried me. After six years, I have a good idea of what I don't know, it really scares me. But uh. I would ask that you give me the opportunity to continue the, the work on the Water Board. Even though six years, I'm still considered to be a new kid on the block. But in the meantime, one of the things that I wanted to do in the beginning was to improve conditions for fishing near Grand Forks, the English Hooli diversion.
So. And he said so.
So far, there was a gravel, the West Pond, we call it, right off of County Road thirteen. There was a already gravel parking place right there, but every time we had a excavator that was working in the area, I had to go out there and clean out some more. So it really broadened out, cleared out the cattail, so people could go fish. And then I found out that game and fish department for North Dakota had a, they would give you a free fishing gear. And I got one. So, and, and the thing is used all the time, and I'm really, I'm really proud of it. But uh, that said, I'm asking that you give me the opportunity to continue to work on Water Board. I'll make that volunteer, Mr. Karen.
All right, you, second? Mr. McHagan, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
I agree on that. Thanks for your service on that board, we appreciate it. The next one?
Yes, sir, next is the Grand Park County Weed Board, and there are two weed board members whose terms are up and not re, not reapplying, so the Weed Board is recommending Mr. David Fritter to a four-year term and Mr. Michael Johnson to a four-year term.
Okay, either of those gentlemen here? Oh. Does I make a motion to approve that? Mr. Ross?
I'll second that.
Mr. Peach, any discussion about this particular report? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Both? That's bad. All right. Uh, the next will be the addition to the, to the agenda. Social Service. Oh.
Well, good afternoon, thank you for having me on such short notice. I am Tammy Knudsen, I'm the Director of Grand Park County Human Services Zone, and I'm here to make a request for an additional vehicle. We currently at Grand Park County Human Services have six vehicles that are used for transporting of children and families for variety of different things, visitation, legal appointments. They're also used for staff to travel, to um visit with families in their homes, to go out of town, to go to trainings, that sort of thing. Recently, I was able to meet with our state liaison with respect of my budget and determined that I had some additional monies that were available this year. Those money, the surplus of money is really due to the salaries that had not been used over the past year because of being short staff. So in taking a look at that and determining what the needs of the agency is, I believe it would be beneficial for us to add a van for transporting kids. We um pay a great deal hours for mileage for family or for our staff if they use their own vehicle. There's liability that goes if they're transporting in their own vehicle. This would allow us one extra vehicle to be used on our child welfare staff. Um, this van would be shared amongst close to fifty different employees, and in hopes trying to alleviate some of that travel that they use with their personal vehicles. Upon taking a look at that, I did go to my partner with the Department of Health and Human Services and made this request. I provided the information with, with respect to the vehicle, the amount of travel that is paid out, the amount of rental cars, the need that we have for it, and I was fully approved by DHS HS for this vehicle. So the cost of the vehicle would be directly under my budget and would not be any county dollars then, that I would be requesting here today to support this purchase. The um this is kind of an emergent situation since that's what have to be purchased by the end of the year within my budget, otherwise my budget starts over in January and I would not have the availability then. I did um look to getting some estimates within the community. I sought out Honda, right now Honda received an estimate for a van. I think reached out to Nelson Auto and was just notified just a little bit ago that they did not have van availabilities for us. Because I only had the Honda, I did reach out to Grand Park Subaru and was able to find a ascent, which is not a van, but it would be a bigger vehicle. The issue that we have in needing a van is because we do, and workers do a lot of transporting of children, so there's a lot of car seats and and in and out of vehicles, and it obviously takes up a lot of space, so a car necessarily would not be so easy for us to use and, and cost effective that way. So a van really would be something that would be pertinent. I did bring a copies of the estimates. The one for the ascent at Subaru was thirty-nine thousand, six hundred and thirty-three dollars. The one for um the Honda van was thirty-nine thousand, eight hundred and forty-five dollars. So they're very similar in cost, the Honda was just a little over two hundred dollars more. Um, so my preference would be to be able to purchase the Honda Odyssey van. But I guess I would leave it up to any questions or thoughts from all of you.
So clarification question, so this is on this year's budget, so it wouldn't impact your ability to then fill out staff if you were to get a bunch of qualified applicants next year, right?
Right, because that's already within the budget for next year, this is definitely just a surplus of money. When I met the end of November, and this is probably is never changing, I had several hundred thousand dollars to be able to, and again, a lot of that was because salaries and we had open positions. But those positions are budgeted for next year.
Yes, I've moved a letter, pick whichever vehicle she wants.
I was, I have one question though, do, do one of these vehicles, specifically the Odyssey that you are assuming would prefer, does that fit your needs or would you like some more time to go look outside? I'd love for you to shop locally, but maybe another community outside of Grand Forks, like is this something that is like, this is the one that I'm looking for?
Well, thank you for asking that. I did, in kind of looking at this, I did our re-transportation aide that does a lot of transporting has been involved in this decision and was able to go out really into the community and look at what, and do some research, and she definitely was in support of the Odyssey van, so I believe it would be very much needed and would need our needs fully.
Mr. Ross, Mr. Chair, hi. Most of these vehicles have to be purchased by, on a state bid. I don't know, did Nelson, did Nelson get the bid for vans for the state of North Dakota? Because there's a list that goes out about this time of who got the bids for police vehicles for highway maintenance, vans, state highway, whatever. So I was just curious if, if your state fleet people could tell you who got the bid for vans for the state of North Dakota?
I guess, I'm not sure the answer to that when we reached out to Nelson. He had indicated they did not have a van and, and offered us one.
They might have one here, but they might have one in Purvis Falls, but.
Well, when I, when we contacted them, they said they didn't have any available. I can definitely go back to them in terms of state or county employees, so I don't know how, where.
Well, still, even if you're county. We have to, we have to go off bids to give the sheriff's vehicles too. County highway, all of them, so I was just curious, you know, because about this time of year, this state comes out with who got the bids for the rest of the year, next year is, so.
And I don't know that.
Your state fleet people would know in Bismarck, so.
Okay.
So, one question I have, you have to complete an offer and purchase by the thirty first of December, or you don't have the money?
We have to be more, by December, by December first, the check has been written by December thirty-first. So, and any, I don't know, we had a purchase of previous vehicles this year. And I'm not sure what was done then in terms of securing this state, I.
Well, so if you're dealing with, with government, you have to go off a state bid, isn't that correct, Ms. Womstead?
Commissioner Ross, members of the board, um, I think my understanding is going off the state bid is the best practice, just because they've been out to a wide variety of manufacturers or dealers of, of motor vehicles. It's not legally required, so if you do a kind of like what you've done, where you've received a variety of bids, obviously the more the better. And if the commission wanted to take action today, I think what they can do is pass a motion authorizing up to a certain limit for her to spend on the purchase, and then it might give her some time to explore the option, but there is something on the state fleet bid that might be a more fitting option at a better price or something like that.
Well, I, she's under the hammer though, I understand that, I'm, I just for future reference, you know, most, most of the time, county, state, they all go off a state bid, so. I mean, if, if, if she doesn't have to do that, I would have no problem with allowing her to get that, that Honda. Because I know she's kind of suspended by the end of the year, normally a person has more time, so.
See that, I'll just notify that that our county engineer has got a comment on this. What I said.
I believe the bid threshold for procuring equipment per counties is a hundred thousand dollars.
Yeah.
So, anything over a hundred thousand has to be public bid, anything less than that, I believe it's discretion of the board.
Okay.
And that would change from fifty thousand to a hundred thousand or three, three, four, five years ago.
Sorry, I didn't refill that, yeah.
Um, instead of the new old creation, the other piece of information is when you're talking about being under the gun, just so you have the timeline. She has to have her request in by Thursday, because they will do the final check cut next meeting. So Debbie's not here to speak on behalf of this, but I, I talked to Debbie yesterday, and Debbie Nelson had no concerns with, as long as she was able to get it done, so.
All right, I think we have a motion, yes, you have a motion. Mr. Ross, second, second question, any, any further discussion or questions?
It was specific to the Odyssey, right?
The motion I made is let the chairman watch what she wants.
Two hundred dollars, she wants yours. All right, anything else? Okay, then, oh, hearing no further discussion, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye, both? Yeah, thank you for bringing us to our test. Good luck.
Mr. McHagan?
Mr. Chair, as a commission, I have a couple items here today. Uh, the first one is, uh, we have three amendments to the zone resolution, the first two are related. So I will address those together and they have been, was initially talked about, commission, or planning commission. They talked about it, just way to address them, and this is what we came up with. In regards to how we define what agricultural buildings are, who has exemptions for building permits. And then also our limited livestock raising, how many, how we define a productive acre and so forth. So the first one is chapter two dash nine dash two. And that is our list of what is exempted from the requirements of building permits. We do have agricultural buildings that are not dwellings, and I added an asterisk to clarify what our policy has been. And it says to qualify for this exemption, the property owner must be agriculturally taxed, so according to the state century code and economy tax declaration director. And the second one is in chapter nine dash five, our limited livestock raising. Uh, we took out the word productive for productive acre, and it's just pasturing acre. And to clarify how we administer that, we added in that all lands located within one half mile of platid subdivisions shall not have animal density greater than one half animal unit per pasturing acre. And we went further to say, in addition to pasture and plan may be required, demonstrate the capability of property. Uh, that should be more clear to people in terms of how many animals that can have or they can have. So with those two, I'd be happy to answer questions.
Questions of the board? So is your, your motion is to amend, as you set forth in this documents?
Correct.
We have a motion, so, Mr. Ross, second by Commissioner Peach. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Both? That one passed.
All right, the final one deals with legal non-conformant structures. Uh, currently, uh, in, what a legal non-conformant structure is, is it would be like a house in an industrial district, which we do, but now the only thing that I can think of, what we have is we have airfield protection zones direct runway extensions from their force base and airport on Grant Works here. Uh, in those zones, the airport, air force bases, that they don't want houses. So they are not permitted use, you have two houses in the air bases. Air protection's on one way across the road from right on Highway Two Base. But uh so if they were destroyed by tornado fire or whatever, beyond fifty percent, they would not be able to reconstruct what they had originally. Uh, the proposal here from the planning commission was to change that and take out that, basically take out that fifty percent rule. Uh, which would allow them to build a structure within twelve months to what the original market value was. Um, I do realize we have an asterisk, or an asterisk in there, noting the county assessor. I guess I would like, also like to take any reference to the county assessor out and just use current market value, because sometimes our assessed values are much lower than what market values are. Being a situation where they couldn't put back what they had, at least that was the intent of what the planning commission wanted to do. Uh, with that said, all three of these amendments did get recommendations of approval, my finding of a shot, not December twelfth. Oh, with that, I'd have to be answered questions.
Any questions?
Make a motion to approve that.
Except for that, second by, by, by Mr. Ross, second by Mr. Ross here. Any other, other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Both? That one passed as well.
Uh, next item is the request of Andrew Broden for Broden first subdivision and Broden second subdivision. Now I am going to do a staff report on both of them at the same time because they're exactly identical. The only reason they're not one platid instead of two plats is they're separated by a township boundary, so for taxation purposes, we can't have one platid. Otherwise it would. So I, uh, the plat application, they're located in section thirty-six, they build township thirty-one. Uh, section thirty-one of every township. Uh, Mr. Broden is both the owner and applicant. Each property consists of a hundred acre, hundred, or actually one's a hundred and sixty acres, the other one's a hundred and twenty-four acres. Uh, it's located near the intersection of Twentieth Street North East and Twentieth, Twenty Fourth Avenue Northeast, and the Seaman goes located four miles to the northeast, the most flat. Properties are currently vacant farm fields, strongly land uses are agricultural, essential lands. According to the land use plans within our agricultural area and both plats do conform to both policies, land use plan. Under our zoning ordinance, both properties are uh, under township zoning. So we would rely on their regulations when it comes time to building permits. However, they do meet the subdivision requirements that are enacted by the county. As far as the background, I have, opposing the split up four residential lots. Two five acre lots on Fish Plate. Uh, they're right across the road from each other, it would be required. And like I said, they're required to be separate, because they're just townships. I have not heard from, I haven't shown the very Lakeville Township, I haven't heard back from them yet. However, I would recommend that if you, if the board still wishes, uh, we would just have a condition that I need to get township recommendations prior to me signing off on the plans recorded. That way we have some type of guarantee. As far as staff comments, uh, each, both lots and each plat would be required to share an access at the property line. Otherwise, staff has no concerns, as all the subdivision requirements are being met. Uh, county planning commission recommended through their December twelfth meeting. So with that, I would recommend approval with, when condition of township recommendations are received prior to planning staff signing up on the Mylar phone recording. That's the management touch, she was seeing.
Questions? By the motion? Oh.
Second.
So this is for to get both subdivisions?
Yeah, problems first and not the second.
Okay. Both of Brown's first and second. Any other questions? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Both? That one passed.
Well, last item I have for you today is consideration of application of Larry O'Connell for Mary subdivision, consisting of two lots on seventeen acres in section nine adventure township. So the property is just the seventeen point one acre parcel land. O'Connell is the property owner and the applicant. Uh, post class located at the intersection of Fifth Street Northeast and Fourth Avenue Northeast. Cedar Reynolds is located approximately eight miles to the southeast of the property, per reference. Property currently has a dwelling located on it, surrounding land uses are agricultural lands and rural estates. As far as the, the land use plan, the proposed class located within our agricultural area and the subdivision does conform to the policies. According to the zoning resolution, it's located within our agricultural preservation district. And the building lots in the holes do conform with the farm standards of that district. As far as the background, the proposed flat is the two lots, lot sizes are two point seven acres and fourteen point four acres respectively. Purpose of the flat is to split the existing home on one parcel, allowing for a second home site. Lot one, an existing dwelling and outbuildings for our building. Lot two would be vacant, and each, each lot would maintain their own existing access, no additional accesses, of course, the avenue would be required. Venture Township, I'd recommend approval of the request. Staff has no concerns with the subdivision, as all requirements are being met. There is subject flooding, as it's located on the Red River. A hundred year flood elevation is leaning on the flat, demonstrates at least one acre of land outside the hundred yard flood plain on each lot as required by our county subdivision regulations. And Grand Park County Planning Commission recommended approval of their December twelfth meeting. So with that, I would recommend approval with no conditions, and we have any concern questions?
We're moved. Mr. Ross, second, by? Mr. Ross, second by. Mr. Peach, I guess. Any further questions? Hearing none, all in favor of the approval of Murray subdivision, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both? Passed. Uh, Mr. Maggison, uh. The uh, I'm not sure I heard in the motion. That. It was depended on you checking with the township, was that part of your motion?
That was.
Alright.
Yeah, yeah, no, I that's understood. Otherwise as presented.
Sure I do.
Thank you.
There's layers.
Uh, terminating members of the commission, I have a couple items for consideration today. The first thing is a update. On the capital improvement project that we were authorized this year to sheriff's office to. Uh, install some restrooms over our water operations building. Uh, currently, well, to bring up to speed, we received one bid on the project. And there was some concerns with the timeline that that I was requesting it to be done by, which was the end of the year. Uh, so I, I. Told them that there might be some wiggle room on that. Uh, part of that would be obviously being able to. Uh, forward that money hundred twenty five thousand dollars into twenty twenty four capital improvement budget, so we're allowed to pay it into next year. So uh without that. There's i- it's not possible for them to complete the project just due to personnel hours that they have in other projects they're trying to complete by the end of the year. So the first item is, is a requesting that. Hundred and twenty five thousand dollars approved in the capital improvement budget of twenty twenty three be carried over into twenty twenty four. Uh, for this specific uh project.
So moved. We have a motion, Mr. Ross, and then a second, Mr. Hagan. Mr. Peach, are you gonna make a question or?
No, I was. In post work.
Any questions on the? Is he on the topic? Uh, alright, we have a motion in a second, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
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 Both?
And full disclosure, thank you, they do, they did uh finally get started on it last week, so there's some bringing up uh. And they're, they've been cutting concrete the last couple days. So. Great order of gasoline and concrete dust in there, but it's coming right along and hopefully they're done mid to end January. Uh, the next item that I I bring before you is a uh request to. Have the commission adjust the overtime rate for contract assignments. They're carried out by the sheriff's office. I did provide some information uh in your packet if you had time to look over it, but I'll just briefly summarize it. That uh last year sheriff's office received over sixty requests for contract overtime assignments and that utilized over a hundred deputies. Um. These assignments are above and beyond. Contract different overtime than we do, so we do, we're a huge partner with Vision Zero uh with NHTSA and the North Florida Department of Transportation. That is separate from this. Uh, the, if you average that out, sure it's five requests a month. But uh if you're. Aware of when most activities happen, these are occurring June, July, August. Most of them are, and uh some of you have actually utilized our services for those. Uh, these contract assignments typically involve events where there's a large number of people and there's typically. Alcohol at these events and there may be minors present. Uh, or it it could be required by state law as well. We also get requests uh that are, I'll call them one off. Uh, where there may have been a potential threat to a workplace. And. They don't want to use security guards, they want armed law enforcement personnel. So we may be sitting outside of a local business for two days or two weeks. Uh, we have signed uh multiple contracts like that. We also have them where sometimes there might be a business that is used to working in different states. And they are transferring equipment through our state. And they want armed security monitoring that equipment as they stated somewhere in our county. Uh, so we've had a few of those, and those might be for two days to seven days. Uh, they eat up a lot of time. And the reason that I'm asking for this increased request is. As it will where the commission did approve uh an increase in our salary this year. And uh this contract rate has not increased since twenty. Oof, nineteen or twenty one.
Since I did it.
It it has been, it has been a few years, so uh. Our current rate is also well below most security companies' contract rates and definitely well below the police department's contract rate. And the proposal that I have is still below what the police department for God has for contract rate. So at this time, I am obviously answering any questions that you have. But I'm requesting a motion to approve our contract overtime rate. Uh, for the grant works, county sheriff's office contract assignments being reduced to fifty five dollars an hour.
Are we making that motion?
Yeah, motion from Mr. Pagan, that needs to be the first, Mr. Ross, second. My comment is, we use the sheriff department for the Northwood days and. Uh, uh, and event at the river state. And they not only are better than anyone else, they are much more. Reasonably. Charging for the state, so this, this is still well below what it would take to have a private, private security, so we appreciate what you do and and I favor.
Actually, no better of it too, but I think some in life. I think it should be asked sooner or more.
Next year.
This is Commissioner Ross suggesting that we should ask for more, yes.
Next year.
Where's the, yeah, the fiscal responsibility thing, no, no, you didn't talk about that, so. But it must be well worth it, so anyway. Uh, motion made seconded, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both?
And that's passed. Thank you, Sheriff.
Uh, the last thing that I do have for you by me is that I just want to pass on from uh the men and women at sheriff's office that work around and thank you to the public commissioners here. Uh, it doesn't go unrecognize uh the. The things that you did for the sheriff's office and. I believe it is helping with. With uh investment in our county and the safety and security here. And along that note, it'll also help with individuals not staying beyond. Uh, their time just to try to meet. Certain criteria or whatnot, so the retirement deal is a big deal for the public safety plan. Along with the increased salary, so thank you and now Merry Christmas all again, I must remember.
But it doesn't go unnoticed towards you and your department for this county either, so this is a two way street, like, so Merry Christmas.
I mean, Dan says it's like, you're okay.
So, Mr. West.
Oh, boy, yeah. Remember, again, members of the board, I don't know. I got all good news today. Well, one little tidbit is a tons of assistance program. We submitted six applications in the county. On behalf of townships and uh. There was. Two hundred and eighty three applications submitted statewide. Twenty. Well, twenty one were selected to be funded fully and one was partially funded with uh the remaining money. Um, and then we got one of them. Which shocked me. And I didn't think we'd get any. But there was a project submitted in Michigan township that was selected, so I don't know why that one versus other ones, but. Maybe I'll find out later as we go through the process, but. Yeah, so we'll be working with that. Uh, with Michigan township on that. And um. It's, it's just a groundy project, so it's pretty simple and straightforward in my mind for first, but. I think we'll have to do a project and. We'll keep working on that for this year. Uh, my first item for consideration would be the Laramore path. Excuse me. First item on the agenda is uh bridges.
Yes.
Uh, B R O M O A's. So back. You can. Four years ago at this meeting, December seventeenth point nineteen, I dropped before the board, there's two bridges in the county that are. Were on the national register of historic places and we talked about what we need to do with them, and at that meeting got permission to. Uh, work on replacement project. June twenty one, legal analyst listed. And uh offer adoption in the word adoptees. Identified, but neither party would be willing to financially contribute to the relocation. Reestablishment of the bridges, then at the September sixth. Twenty twenty two meeting. Um, the board agreed just to demolish and even cost it move forward. However, in that timeframe, the DOT came back with the bridge up by the midway school. AK the midway bridge. That it's a truly unique bridge, it's the one of its style of estate that like, hey. That works down, you might really try to find an adoptee on this. Uh, we did not issue another legal ad, but just through the grapevine, there was a guy up and drafted, that's the way to take it. Um, which is great news. And then um. This summer, the bridge down in Wally Township, the Os Valley Bridge, during its annual. Inspection noticed some major problems with it and. It was talked about closing it and uh we decided to. Possibly, and then get the, everybody to agree to post it for three times, which is a minimum weight. Forty close bridge. Three times like. And empty half time pick up this boat, three times, right, so it's all, all that's legal to go across it, but. In that process and with the issues that were gave up on it this past summer, the bridge would be determined to be unadoptable. Which helps with the process. This decision's made, right? So there's two MOAs that are. Are presented for consideration that outline the understanding between. State historic preservation office, ship all federal high DOT, it's pounding. And then um. The midway bridge would have the adoptee, a correct adopter, I guess they call it. In here. And. With the MOAs, if it would be approved, then we can move forward with replacement projects on that. The. Bridge in Wally Township, we have an eighty four inch concrete pipe that's been sitting there for two years. Patiently but eating fruit, permitting and paperwork to go through. The bridge up by midway, uh, we were gonna replace it with a box culvert. However, I think we can do it cheaper with um. Interesting enough, as old as the bridge is, the openings are still good. So it's still kind of narrow, but we could have our own crews go out there, put new beams across, timber deck. And it would function. It would work, there'd be no tunnel limit, you can get big equipment through there, it'd be just wide enough for the lightest combine to pit on it. Um, and I talked to the townships and the, the, the Avery farmers and they're like, oh, that'd be great. We have to sign up for one lane bridge for the what function that is. Um, decorating upon that bridge. That is our intent at this point. I would ask for. Approval of the MOAs and chair's signature. Which is through the docu sign process electronically that we've. Said to, or to chairman. Any questions?
I would move forward on those motions, for those MOAs with the chair's signature.
I mean, else, perhaps you can answer, should we do these in, in separate openings for these two MOAs, they're very similar, but they are different bridges.
Mr. Chair, excuse me, Mr. Chair members of the board, I think it would be best if they were addressed separately.
So if, if your motion would be for the midway bridge and the first MOA Anderson are.
Yes.
Right, we have a second, Mr. Ross, any other discovered questions? Quite a good room, we can roll call both. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both? Pass. Uh, the second uh agreement is for the, we call it the Os Valley Bridge.
Correct.
Right, very good. Mr. Hagan, second by you. Sorry, for discussion.
Mr. Chair who made the motion? What? And made the motion?
Mr. Ross, but trying to be the slowest.
That's because I'm way down at the end. Taking vacation takes a while.
Alright, there's some, well, this one, then, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both?
Thank you. I'll mention one thing, that the board should be aware of, I'm sorry, I didn't write it up because it's not part of the formal MOA. So the Os Valley Bridge. The adoptee that would have taken it. Still is interested in it. And being that the bridge is not adoptable. We are not required to maintain its integrity. The DOT is okay if we scrap the bridge essentially, but yeah, send it to residual. This man is still interested in taking it and his ideal would be. Is, and he would not be able to take the whole bridge, pick it up and move it. But if he was allowed to cut it in three pieces, he could put it on a smaller trail and pull it away. And then weld it back together on this site, I'll have been very intelligent. I spoke to the adjacent landlord and I said, hey, if we take this bridge off in June and. It sits there for a few months and let this other guy pick it up, would that be okay? And he's like, oh, absolutely, he's so happy to get rid of the bridge, whatever works. So that was my intent. Is to still let this man take the bridge, the only thing we lose is. Scrap the value of the bridge, but. Yeah, you know, it's peanuts and we can still say, hey, this, well, the ridge is around. It's not a hundred percent maintained in its integrity, but. It's still there. And I saw in that be a pretty neat, make a difference for the community and. Their own speed for. Uh, mission or not, but I think she would smile at that. Well, that, that's what I like verbally talking to two people about, if the board is okay with that, I would post with that.
Now, hopefully years ago. There's no barnacle. Okay, Richard.
Thank you. Uh, second item is the Laramore shared use path. So. This one. Um, so back. This meeting in twenty twenty one. December twenty first, twenty twenty one, um. The. I was standing before the board and got permission to have the county act as a sponsor for the water board to support the grant application. To take responsibility and apply for the overlay of the shared use path. So that goes from the city of Laramore out to the Laramore dams, of course, rec area, it's happened often. Um. That was proved, the grant was awarded November ninth of twenty twenty two. Um. The. Uh, staff and I would like, or Miss Watson and I were visiting that we thought it would be a good idea to have an agreement. Between the county and the water board to solidify that, it would be the exact same concept that we did. With the Northwood Public School a number of years ago. Same program, they have a shared use path in the school in the city. Um. And so there's. That agreement for consideration and then there's the agreement between the county and the DOT. As with any federally project that. That we have. Um, so I, when you're seeking approval for both of those, one little curve ball. With the county water board agreement is yesterday morning, legal counsel for the water board sent a re- revision. And that I did forward the revision on this right away, as soon as I got it yesterday for consideration. They have copies of it here, if anybody would like to see the hard copy of it, it was. And the last paragraph was modified, um. I don't want to speak to what the changes are exactly, you know. If I have any questions or. If I want to elaborate on that.
A little bit, have you seen the versions?
Yes. Mr. Chair members of the board, um, I have seen the corrections and visited um the water board attorney and got said I have no objection to.
Okay, thank you.
For anybody like hard copy to see. Um. Which I would. Ask for approval for the bolt agreements. And then on the DOT agreement, they're looking for. State's attorney of auditors and chair's signature through that docu sign or tracking process as well. Alright.
I made my motion to approve with the chair's signature. Second?
Second.
I don't get, what was it? Mr. Hagan first? Right, yeah. One for the second? Um. And somebody will call both, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both? Pass.
Mr. Chair, that was for the agreement between the county and the water board. And, or was that the whole agreements?
What was the motion?
Yes.
Well, we should do one, one for each, each agreement, that's it. Okay, so we'll consider that for each of you. Okay. And then. Another motion?
Hold over, Hagan? And second.
Second?
Yes, she's reading second.
What?
I'll then I can.
Alright.
You'll say, so.
Alright, any questions on this, are we confused? Hearing your discussion questions, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All.
Thank you. I have hard copy of. I have hard copy of a modified agreement. I don't know if this doesn't would have had that packet. Yes, it certainly wasn't in the packet, but.
I think it's based.
Yes. Yeah, and then um the water board could sign it. Either at tomorrow's water board meeting or. At the end of the year, and in the room too, he could sign it as well too, but he was like, we're not.
Do your way you want.
You know. So, okay, um that is all I have for the board. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Want to see the next item is the parking rent. The city has continued to have a special say for their inspectors and engineers on. Uh just what exactly. This grass would look like, what's going to cost them, it's going to be increasing that again. So um they weren't prepared to get here today. People getting in front of us, yes, I think that something was coming. And so I guess to simply wrap up this item, I would move that we just move a good faith towards it as three, then. Both parties can get a majority on. And this in kind of like a kick can on a roll uh. Well, just, but just to show the 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 city that we're we're still interested and uh. Well, we need a motion.
Not not at, no, I don't think at this point, because there's nothing to move on.
You know, so just be glad to entertain whatever they want to bring to us, but but that is. Put on the agenda, that's what we talked about it.
Mr. Chair, we should rest it. I did receive a note from Mr. Phelan asking. To be on the agenda either the first or second meeting, January. There'll be, he'll 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 let us know, but it'll be in January, it sounds like.
Anything else on that, Mr. Ross then?
No, that was, I would just tell him that they ready in here, but. That's it as well, and so then it just kind of got cooked down with what.
Talk one of the next. Okay, what does Miss Nelson have for for us?
I'm just gonna. Or did you have? You wanted me to go through um the budget amendments, you want me to go through them line by line, I don't know if. It's necessary, but um. I took as many notes as I could and tried to do as well as Demi does, but. Uh the highway fund um for the twenty twenty-three budget adjustments, um the highway department spent more money than they. And previously had that they had the money available, so to cover it um FEMA. Our two. Budget at the beginning of the year, what natural disasters we're gonna have, but the revenues from the emergency fund are aimed to offset that. And then there was quite a few of them that we received more money in our living dollars. That are obviously just going back to that organization, just gonna go through those really quick. So the historical society, the senior citizens, economic development, um Peterson. Uh diversion, the water resource board. The county library service, the Red River Joint Management. Ambulance, regional airport authority, and then that graduate soil conservation district. All those dollars were just received for that we had budgeted for, those dollars just gone back. Um the city and county health, sorry to pop us back up, but. There was a car accident or involved in a car accident that. Was purchased with ARPA funds, so that's for that seven hundred fifty dollars that we um used as our portion. Jail expansion, um these are the actual expenses on the jail expansions. We didn't know what they were at the beginning of the year, so we didn't budget for them. And then the fifteen million dollar maker project alone, those were the fees that were associated with taking out that loan. Um the five million dollar dome, again. These that were attached to that loan. And then the fond fun, the last one here was paying off the old correctional center with dollars unpaid. So. That is what Demi wanted me to relay, unless anybody has any questions, I got to ask her, but. I believe we have some motion to approve all of those, you you do all of those.
Anyone have you to add to explanations, questions?
Mr. Chair, I would move approval of the twenty twenty-three budget adjustments that. Um is taken just discussed.
I also have a second, I'll second my.
One second and any further questions of either. President Hagan or. Help us to force. There are none, all and assuming you're vote or vote, I'll prepare for the motion, signify by saying aye.
Right.
Aye, both.
And then we do need to volunteer somebody to come in, one of us commissioners becoming on the twenty-ninth to prove any end of year bills.
I can. No, I want to, there's somebody else.
That would do.
That would be the chair.
Well, since I. I'm gone and for most just that they.
I volunteer.
I think Mr. Ross, Mr. Ross.
I have more time than anybody, I think.
That potentially could be working a child, so I'm gonna.
I think I'm welcome in, but. Mr. Ross, are you volunteering to do it?
I am, all right.
And then.
We need a motion for that, I guess. Let's do so.
And, oh yeah, right here. I move approval for Commissioner Ross to come sign any end of year bills, second.
All favor?
Aye.
I vote.
Um then there is the joint causes agreement that says the. The voting, because they've been between this to me and the county, I mean, it's the same as years past, we just need to approve it again for the next year.
We seek to coordinate the holding of elections with different communities.
How many of these are there?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner A, eleven uh. Do you want me to just list off what they're with? Uh the city of Grand Force, Grand Force Park District, Grand Force Public Schools, Emmerdale, Gildie, Inster. Laramore, Mandville, Northland, Reynolds and Thompson, so those are eleven agreements.
Substantially the same agreements, so I think we can have at least. Okay, a single motion, a motion. All vote, Mr. Ross did, second, I got to Mr. Ross. All in favor, or any other discussion or questions? All in favor of the motions, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Vote.
And I believe, no, not the last one, second last one, we need to have a motion to. Approve the sending of the annual report notice of the Grand Force Community Building Authority.
All right, um. This is due on February first, is there a reason that it's on the agenda for today or time you want?
Just because it's it's ready to be submitted and the the commission just has to uh provide the direction to submit it.
I would move approval of that.
For beach.
Second.
Second, like for Hagan. Questions? All in favor of the motions, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Vote. Yeah. Mr. Ford, you have some.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chair members with permission, a few things. Uh the first is in, it's a proposed amendment to our. Agreement with Icon to provide professional services, architectural services for the youth assessment center and the correctional center expansion. Uh it amends the original contract, um it reflects services and costs. That are a result of our replodding work performed by Icon and Laurie's engineering. It also reflects additional work that resulted from the negotiations with the fair board uh from last year. And so needing our requesting board uh board approval to adopt the amendment and share signature. And I'll put on, as Ms. Ms. Lam said, was was inquiring earlier. So as for the replodding, it covers all the fees for all the replodding process until we got to the moment of recording and then the the process stopped. And negotiations began.
All right, so the existing request for. Proving the amendment, which will complete payment on the twenty-six thousand eight seventy.
Mr. Chair, you're you're approving the adoption of the amendment and it's actually. There is the twenty-six thousand eight seventy, but the compensation adjustment should reflect five thousand six ten. As well, uh I just caught that today, but it's not on there, but the total would be thirty-two thousand four eighty um. Would you like me to get that reflected in this, Ms. Lamstead, or what are your thoughts? I just, I just caught that earlier today. Okay.
Mr. Chair members of the board, I think the um. Motion could include that that be added even just. And in um before the chair's signature.
The extra five thousand six ten year.
Five thousand six hundred and ten dollars, yes, sir.
Okay. Questions? Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
With the. No, I'm just, I'm staying with the, what Ms. Lam said, with the additional. Adding of the, I believe you said thirty-two thousand four hundred and eighty dollars in or whatever with the signature.
Okay. One second, Mr. Ross?
Yeah.
Right, any further questions? Assuming a roll call vote, all favor of this motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Vote.
Good, thank you, Mr. Chairman of the Commission. Um I sent an email to the commission earlier today, apologize again for the eleven hour ad. But we have a change order from construction engineers regarding the courthouse. Uh the courthouse security entrance improvements and um. As they are near completion of that project, it was determined that there was not adequate lighting over the desk where the deputies would sit. So this change order would reflect adding some some extra lighting to illuminate uh that desk area. Um if this, this is for that, that grant that we received. Um unfortunately, it's outside the scope of the original one hundred ninety-five thousand. And the grant funds have been exhausted, so the additional work. As a result of the change order would be one thousand six hundred and seventy-one dollars and forty-four cents. And I I did talk to Ms. Nelson this morning and it could come from capital improvements.
All right.
So looking for commission permission to uh approve the change order forward.
Mr. Page. Mr. Chair, I would move to um. Approve the change order and commence with the work that needs to be done and laying with the. In the office area when the sheriff will stay, sheriff's deputy.
All right, second, Mr. Ross. Any other comments? That's only a roll call vote. All favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Vote. Yeah.
Just making sure if Mr. Chair, any other uh eleven dollar ads? The the next thing is um it's it's that time of year to review commission portfolio assignments and any expired external board assignments. Um and I'll defer to Mr. Chairman on on that.
Well, these. I think we go with it as published, but if someone wants to change or assume something else, call me and we can still. And change this going forward because. They'll have our. Portfolios that we really like and something we don't like as well, but yeah. Cover it all.
Is is the uh corner on there?
Twenty-four.
For there, is it on there?
You're on there.
Okay, that's you. Yeah.
Any other comment? All right, no more something required there.
So leave leave as as is, Mr. Chair? Right now, okay, very good. Next is approving the twenty twenty-four county commission meetings, first Tuesday, third Tuesday of the month. Um four o'clock up to the commission uh to adopt that schedule moving forward.
We need a motion. So.
All favor of that motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Vote.
Are we okay for the election? November. So that's on a Tuesday, the first Tuesday.
Is that election day, November third?
Yeah.
In November.
Oh, yeah, first Tuesday in November. We have in the past um moved that to. Wednesday sometimes or done something for the election year going, or do we let it the same?
I I think you've left it the same.
Okay.
Yeah, it was good. I think.
Yeah, the if if Ms. uh Commissioner P J, if you're worried about election results, they don't get certified that that day, so I think you'd be okay as an elected body. But if you're talking about the timing, I think you've always. Right, exactly.
So. Let's see what happens. Right, are you, anything else that you have?
That's all I have, Mr. Chair, okay, um.
There, Ms. Lam said, have you got anything today? Okay, ready for sports?
Um well, the the jail had a fire in one of their dryers, uh pretty significant fire. Um within the newspapers and all that, but um. It's uh everything been turned over to the insurance company. Uh but everything's gonna have to be pulled out of there, they gotta redo the uh. The ceiling, uh they've got to redo, I mean repaint the walls. So all the dryers, washers, everything's got to come out of there, they're gonna store in their Sallyport for right now and uh. And the word will commence, as I said, uh you know, it's all been turned over to insurance, so.
Or they're doing what they're, you know.
Uh they are doing it at C N R.
Yep.
So still trouble with the turnaround, you know, it's like a couple days, so. But.
The middle of the night, right? There was so much actually losing anything.
You know, they're investigating that to see, you know, um. To see how it happened. And they do have a camera footage, so.
Okay.
Um other than that, we had our our building committee meeting this morning at ten o'clock, I would be uh construction check for. The uh the jail and the assessment center. Uh went through, they're doing very well, actually, uh. Mr. Ford also was in attendance, but it uh. This weather's really刮风，so. They are moving right along. Other than that, that's it.
That's the motive.
I mean, one and so many. Oh yeah, I forgot, planning, so we, yeah, last week, well, we went over all that already today. Just by essence, presentation, so there's nothing good reported there, um M P O. Tomorrow is gonna be up there. So.
I'm excited for you.
Yeah, yeah. So we'll see. But that's, that's all that there is on.
I still encourage everyone to go check out some awesome light and playhouse play at the Grand Force Public Library. It's pretty cool, um and I have. I guess the only thing that I've done in the last two weeks is the gratitude gathering, because he was recognized um as a mutual. I was a mutual, mutual long haircut um for their work with the Red River, so the small fish stuff, some theater state for tomorrow's roadmap. So that was uh going to be there and. Listening to some stories of how they're obviously doing amazing work in their community and. Rest of my other couple more, rest of the four Christmas.
The human service zone advisory committee, our board met this afternoon prior to this meeting. Um. There are an up number, an uptick in the number of um. CPS cases happening, it, it happens this time of year. Particularly of as more children are in school and, and booking at breaks coming up. Um, a lot of good discussion was talked about, uh. Different types of uh, training the staff are getting, um, most of the staff. In eligibility and within the administrative work of the workforce zone. Um, or the zone are filled, are about to be filled, which is very exciting. Um, to see. And there's been some good training that's come from the state uh, called courageous onsite case management visit. Um, they came for a week. And did some training with staff, which was, was very much appreciated. Um, and the Children and Family Services Review will take place in January. And that's done by the state that come in and, and review uh, how the staff are documenting things and. And uh, keeping up with all the caseloads that they have, there are about eleven hundred caseloads. In the city, in the county of Grand Forks. Obviously, all of them are not done by eligibility within the county, that can spread out amongst the state. Uh, to all the various zones. Um, but it's a big responsibility. So. Um, and Airport Authority Board meeting will be on Thursday morning. That's all I have.
Alright. This isn't a committee assignment, but I went to the Olive and Hotel. Brand opening. Place is spectacular, and it's kind of interesting because that's one that came before economic development and then to the county. And the taxing authorities to give them tax breaks as they get started. And that looked like a really good investment on part of the city and the county and everybody. Because it is truly a, a luxury hotel and it's uh. Very well done, so that was, that was interesting when you see. Then yesterday, there was a meeting out of the Brand Sky, talking about some of the construction projects. That are going board up there and. And nothing. Uh, nothing to report for being a topic yet, but they've got some thinking in mind. So.
Mister, I just. I have one addition, uh, yeah, I slipped my mind, but it's an age thing. Um, I had a meeting with Doctor Sims out at the uh. Order's office uh, last week. Uh, she's had some issues um, with the uh. Some issues with the medical out at the U N D, the forensic end of it. Um, and her rent. Uh, that she pays out there at the, where the center is out here on South End in Grand Forks. Uh, I asked her that she should revisit her uh. Her lease agreement, I think they pay roughly about ten thousand dollars a month. Uh, rent out there, and they're responsible for any mechanical or anything, other issues that go haywire. And to me, it should be the person that has the. Uh, their leasing, it'll be made for all that, so I asked her, she should revisit that with. The law department out there at U N D, since they're the ones that reviewed it and signed off on it. Uh, and there were some other issues which I asked her to reach out to uh, State's Attorney Lamstead, and I don't know if she has yet. But uh. There are issues that I probably don't want to discuss at this meeting, so.
Ten thousand dollars, what, what type of building, I mean, obviously it's corny, it's like, it's not huge though. I'm saying, what, on my end, all the and hotel would be talking about a ten thousand dollars a month, not a huge facility.
Yeah, and I mean, it's not up, I mean, they constantly keep raising it and. The site department out there, a building is available for anybody who needs space. But I don't know who in the heck would want to rent from those guys, they're, they're the ones that hold the lease on. I don't have, oh, yeah, so. No, but, but uh, everything is run through U N D, in, in far as uh. And they, the law. Department signed off on all of it after reviewing that contract, which I don't believe. Makes any sense, so I asked that it should be reviewed again, so.
Not retail space. Guess I, I think.
I think it went from eight to ten.
In the plus, you may have to pay their own.
Maybe they go wrong.
And I've never been over my word, oh, well, if you're.
No, I mean, you got such a.
It's unusual that pairs of fall into that, but I've seen it, I've never done it, but I've seen it. I think. Fifteen to forty, if dollars per square foot per month is kind of long rate, but it really depends on. Parking and all that's about it, things, I mean, down, down here, I think on the road, I think I'm getting up, I'm getting a little under twenty. Per square foot per month, uh, but. I don't pardon my speed up, especially now that Montsos, you get to build my stores. But uh. So. And all, it's, it's a, it's market there, you know, it's ten thousand, it's what the market there, it seems ridiculous, I found that, but. Marketism, party there, awesome. At U N D, page seven, page eight.
Alright. Anything further? Anyone?
Make a motion for adjourned.
But, but, I'll sign.